The study session of independent school district 535 school board is called to order at 5:50 on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 in room 137 of the Addison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting executive member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson, here. Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Sussner?
Here.
Ms. Selinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse my fumbling under the table, Mike. These new belts that he just kind of put together, mine just kind of fell apart, so.
Do we know what drove him?
Not to draw attention, Mike.
He's got his own sprawl going on.
Sorry. 2.01, approval of agenda. Mr. Munoz, I'm sorry.
There are no changes.
Move of approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. 7.01, evaluation tools framework. This is informational item. And Ms. Chair Selinger.
Thank you. So, thanks to the board for their hard work over the last many months and superintendent as well. As of our last August study session, we did finalize the goals, the pieces of evidence, and the standards and language underneath the standards. So, the few other pieces of process to be decided, or discussed rather, was the mid-year reflection, as we have discussed both at the June meeting and then at the August meeting. So, at the end of the study session in August, the Executive Committee, Don, myself, and Mike, were charged with coming back with a recommendation about the reflection, and so we have brought that for you tonight in a very informal way. So, our feeling at this time is that superintendent's reflection would be merely a reflection report to the board based on looking at the goals and evidence of performance, that that would occur sometime in January. And although we didn't specifically talk about this in our small group, in terms of time, I was thinking of a sort of 15 to 20-minute presentation. I know we're using a lot of words that may have different meanings to different people, but 15 to 20-minute item on the agenda.
On the second meeting in January.
Sure, it sounds good. Well, yes, we probably don't want to do them.
And being a part of the conversation, I thought it was wonderful to strike agreement in terms of affirming what this is. It's a reflection, mid-year reflection. Again, without trying to define, you know, nail definition terms down, but it's not, you know, that formal evaluation that will occur later. And, you know, I'm less concerned about the length of time it may take. You know, the superintendent will have her much time. You know, I don't want him to feel that he has to drag it out to, you know, if he can be somewhat reflective and have her much time, that's fairly good. And I think he would even be open, if there are specific things that you'd like to see in that reflection, I believe, you know, we have that opportunity for that. So, I think for the most part, we know that the reflection will allow opportunity for response. That's my understanding.
So, is this is going to be, as you're seeing the mid-year thing, what are we calling it?
Reflection.
Reflection. A presentation from Mike and then a discussion, or a presentation from Mike and then that's the it?
Personally, I would not see a lot of discussion because I think it's, my understanding thought was that he is reflecting on the goals and the evidence and how, kind of like, how's that working versus a presentation where it might develop into any number of questions and depth of topic. That's just my thought.
Okay, and I guess my concern there is that if the superintendent is seeing things one way and others are seeing things very differently, that having some sort of conversation could be really useful because it could be we're looking at things the same way, we're just describing it differently. For instance, and I think the goals are great. I think that the standards that we're using, I think these are absolutely appropriate, and I think they're really, really important ones. So, I'm so pleased that we're doing those because these things matter. But for instance, under goal one, evidence or performance, report in second step curriculum implementation. I'm not particularly interested in hearing how second step works, you know, a description of what it is and how it's delivered. I would love to hear from Mike, how's it going? You know, what's working, what's not working? Things getting tweaked? Are we going to expand it? You know, that kind of, that kind of information, not just, here's an overview of second step or here's an overview on what panorama is. But if you're getting feedback from students, what are they saying? And I would be very happy if that were a 15, 20-minute presentation from Mike, you know, discussion from Mike. And then maybe, maybe after that type of thing, if we had questions, perhaps we could send them to you and you and Don could discuss them with Mike at a Monday meeting. Or whoever is there at the time, yeah.
The executive.
Well, and that's a point well made. And we thought, let's roll it out and see what it will bring, you know, versus anticipating this or that. Let's allow it to occur because anything we do is more than what we've done. Okay, so, let's start here and then build from there. If, you know, that's, and we're not really just throwing something out there just to say we've done something. I believe the team, the moments that Deborah, Mike, and I spoke, I think you'll be pleased. I think it will meet the threshold of expectation. Okay?
I like that idea because as we've had this conversation, I think I'm looking for some direction from Mike because he knows more about what these words mean in actual operational terms in the district than we do. You know, we can talk about the concept, but he really knows what the information is. And what I've been trying to guide my whole work on the superintendent goals is, and I'm going to use your phrase, how is that working? And I think Mike knows a little bit more about how to define how that is working than we do because, again, this is our second first rodeo of the night. And I don't know if it's the right place to do it as part of this or just to plan for our conversation at the end of the year, but to know sort of how we can expect to see the evidence of performance come to the board under each of the goals. Because again, there's a timing issue of when specific types of data might be available. You know, some might not be available till the end of the year, some might not be available this school year. So, we've never really talked about, you know, we've talked about what we would like the evidence to be, but we really haven't operationalized it in terms of what actually works or when it's available for Mike. There might not be information available by January, for example, for some of these evidence of performances, but that might be available by the end of the year. So, it'd be nice to know that timeframe.
Julie, I'm sorry.
I think I liked what Director Marvin, oh, this is study session. I like what Jean had to say about, you know, that it is a reflection. My understanding was the whole reason we're having anything in January or February was so that Mike could touch base, Mike and the board could touch base with each other and reset correction if necessary, rather than, you know, so you're going this way and we could set correction, but if you keep going this way and then all of a sudden here's June or July, you know, we don't want that to happen. And so, that's what I understood that the reflection piece would be, just so we can, like Jean said, touch base and figure out or say, get suggestions. So, in terms of it being only a 15-minute conversation, it could potentially end up being significantly shorter or significantly longer depending on the board's response to Mike's reflection.
Oh, well, again, this, if I may.
I think superintendent is ready.
No, I guess, I guess like, some of the, I'm like, what kind of report can you get from, well, we had 22 site plans and 12 of them focused on equity and five were on SEL and six were on whatever. I mean, the same thing on panorama. We did panorama survey. We had 1,200 kids take the survey. Forty percent showed that they had high anxiety or whatever, or didn't feel that, you know, kind of what Denise shared with you, I mean, some of that.
Well, I think with the build on what Jean was saying, though, what you're saying there, I see that as factual information. And what Jean was looking for is, based on factual information, what's your vision on using that factual information to make things better? That's what the presentation would be, not necessarily the facts. That might be a good precursor, but okay, we've learned this. Now, we see we need to make this adjustment and grow in this direction, i.e. strategic thinking.
Right, and I don't think it's necessary to, I mean, generalizations in not specific schools can be called out.
Right, right. Yep, yep.
Or whatever.
Well, and my thing was panorama, for instance, I really don't care how many kids took it, but I think it'd be really interesting, what are some aha moments or some themes that you were seeing emerging? And what are we doing with those? I mean, that's, for me, that's the leadership part. So, the kids were saying this, and what we've decided to do is this. You know, three minutes maybe.
Yep.
And if you are having, I mean, some of these are implementation pieces, like second step, if you are having obstacles to implementation, how is that also driving your decision making? You know, we thought this was going to be a smooth road, but, you know, we're hitting these speed bumps and this is how we're addressing it. We're abandoning it. And again, Kathy, for me, that's a huge part of leadership is saying, this just isn't working the way we thought it was going to, so what we're going to try next is whatever.
So, you're really using the scientific method?
Yeah, not at all.
Right.
But informal, I mean, I don't need that binder or anything else, just here's what we're doing, this is what seems to be working, these are some of the road bumps we've had, this is what we want to try next, and.
And this is our recommendation to the board. I think we have met your expectation and we'll see how it goes.
Yep.
Well, and I think it also gives Mike an opportunity to say, you know, this is really what I need if I had X, Y, and Z or, you know, if, because I think the board and the superintendent are a team and we want to back you up in anything that you do, I mean, assuming everything is, you know, like, if you go shoot somebody, I'm going to have to have to back off. You know, to say to the board, well, you know, we're really thinking about maybe using different curriculum materials next year because, and this might cost more money and we need to find a place in the budget for it. You know, anything like that that you need, that you feel would help students achieve.
So, have you heard?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I guess the only fear I have is in January, I present or report, whatever you call it, and you want it this way, but you want it this way, and you want it that way.
Are you talking about the presentation itself, the contents of the content?
Yeah, just the whole thing.
Okay. Well, and I think I, you know, the way I look at it is more because this is our learning year that, you know, first time we've done it, so, you know, I'm asking for all of us to have some grace, right? Like, we're, you know, can we make an agreement that we're not going to, you know, cause a big upset because Mike didn't do it exactly the way that we thought it was going to be, but to say, oh, that didn't quite work right and hold all of ourselves accountable? Like, no, we kind of think we know what we're going for and maybe it wasn't quite right, but it'll be okay. And then when we get, in my opinion, when we get to the end of the year, and we can say, was that a valuable thing to see Mike have in the middle of the year? Or Mike may say, I really liked that because I could give you some feedback along the way. Or we might say, you know what, that didn't, that didn't help us, you know, dump it on us on the year. I mean, I guess, I know, and I know the, maybe the flexibility and wishy-washiness is hard, but all this is hard work too, right? And I would rather have us have more flexibility with each other than get so constricted into it must look this way that we can't, that we're not getting a good product out of the system.
And I don't know if it's, if it's fair, that's not the right word, protocol to suggest, but I would think that if you're developing this and you have some questions, remind me again about what this means. I would empower Don and Deborah to be able to answer those questions. You know, if you're, I would say, don't be afraid to ask for clarification before you get to the finished product because I think you heard us, you know, you were part of the original team, you heard us in the conversation and could probably, you know, help steer that answer to the question before it gets to the table.
I wonder if it would be useful to do, you know, the conversation exactly as you described it, just ask Mike to talk about how things are going, 15, 20 minutes, whatever it is. But then for the board to sort of, and Mike, to sort of debrief that at another time before the end of the year. Because if the deal was, you know, without saying, oh, Mike, you did it wrong, if we could get together and say, huh, that wasn't the information that we were expecting, or could we have worded questions better or communicate to Mike before the end of the year? And we may not agree, but just to sort of have a 20-minute debriefing, what was meaningful about that? And you include it, what was not?
I think if.
Plus delta.
I think your concern is, and please tell me if I'm wrong, is that you're going to be getting seven different things from seven different board members and you're going to have to do da-ding, 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 and all of this stuff to meet the requirement that every board member would have, rather than as a unified voice saying, this is what we want. And if that's what we do, my opinion is, I'll speak for myself, if it's not quite exactly what I wanted, I will keep my mouth shut, okay? It's on record. I won't say anything.
In writing, Julie, in writing.
No, but looking at the board as the governance board, it's the board that's giving you
the direction, you know? And later on, maybe we could have sort of a, well, after the Big Nine Music Festival, we always call it Monday evening post-mortem, you know, to say, did this go well? Like Deborah was saying, you know, what went well, what didn't go well? But as one board, we have to give him that direction because it's not fair to him, it's not fair to any of us to have to, you know, say, well, okay, this is what I want to see from you, Mike, you know, and then I spend 15 hours, you know, putting something together that's going to take you a whole lot longer to answer, you know? We can't do that, in my opinion.
Well, I think that's a valued opinion and it provides almost a natural segue into 7.02, not wanting to rush the process.
Can I ask one quick question, Don? There was a desire by the board to have something formally approved at a meeting. So, what do you want approved? What do you want on the December agenda?
In terms of your goals?
Yes.
The goal document?
Yes. Is it the whole document? Is it the goals? Is it, what is it?
I would say minimum, I would be fine with minimum the goals. And is, does that, does that jive with your contract?
No, it's fine. I just, I just want, well, yeah, the contract just specifically says the goals. It doesn't get into all the.
I do believe, though, that this tool may be a public document, and if someone requested it, they could have it.
Well, it's already out there, right?
It's out there in draft form.
Yes, it's out there in draft form. So, but I, I'm okay with just the goals because I think a lot of this is, that's my thing.
So, when you say just the goal, then we're eliminating the evidence piece?
For a public, for a public.
Okay.
For approval.
Like if this is a consent agenda or whatever, that it would just be those pieces, not this entire tool. But again, that's just me.
Okay, so, so it is reflection and just looking at goal one because it's the first one, the superintendent will provide leadership to ensure, and then to all points. So, then he would not report how student voices impacted decision-making throughout the year? That part would not be part of this reflection?
No, no, we're just talking about, what I think you're asking is, like at the December board meeting, once we're done with this document, do we want to just like vote, yep, this is what we've done, community, this is an agenda item? We're not talking about the reflection piece.
Okay, okay.
We're just talking about a.
Something that we have to get out of draft form.
Tool validation.
A real form.
Yeah, tool validation.
Well, actually, we're not talking about the tool, we're just talking about the established goals for the 19, 20 school year, right?
Which is language used by the contract. The contract says every year you will establish goals.
Okay.
Well, we have it right there then.
It doesn't say you have to, it's just, I thought at one time, one of our meetings, there was discussion by someone that we should get these approved at a formal board meeting.
I don't have strong feelings either way.
And the MSBA handbook does not say, and the next step is to take a vote. It says, "School board and superintendent create goals and/or identify standards based on school district priorities that are measurable and achievable in 12 months."
Okay, well, we can forget that then.
Sure.
Okay.
Just cross it out, Wendy.
I'll cross it out.
So, that's okay, I mean.
Yeah.
I have a bad idea.
And, and.
Okay, never mind.
Or, yeah, no, I just think they are so important and I think that they speak so strongly to what we believe and to what the superintendent is doing, that I'm thinking at minimum, having this go out to the community.
Well, do you want it just as an information item? Like these are the established.
Consent? Well, no, I guess I was thinking if he's doing his reflection, they will be before the public then.
Which is totally new. Never had to do that before.
Right. I mean, in January, when.
No, never ever had to do any public presentation for my evaluation.
Right.
It's all been.
For session.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that as a statement about what our focus is, about, you know, what the superintendent who's leading the district, these are three things that are so important to who we are.
So, you're looking at it as an opportunity of messaging to the community?
That's exactly, yeah. So, whether it's just on the consent agenda, information item, if we vote on it.
Does it need to be approved though? Because then we have to do a resolution and then it has to be legally approved.
Versus an information item?
Like, you know, you get a lot of information items, and this report is presented for your information.
And I'm fine with that.
Are you okay with that? I'm okay with that. It seems like.
So, who's going to present that information?
Donna.
Okay.
I think it's just the reading of the goals.
Okay.
Is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Information item?
That's fine.
Say we've worked blah, blah, blah.
And, and maybe make sure to add something that this is a new process for everybody? I think that's important too.
Yep.
If I may, so, what just happened then, and especially towards the end, and it has nothing to do with you, Julie, but what happens is, as a group, we will agree and then one of us will say, and at this, and then one may think that, oh, that's part of the package when it may not actually be part of the package. And so, this will also kind of move us, and I'm trying to get us to 7.02 professional development because, well, I don't want to spill the beans in advance of, but.
Well, you got to tell us something.
You got to admit your stance.
Coffee beans or jelly beans.
We have an opportunity. And so, I guess I want to, you were suggesting that what else should be added to the informational item?
That this was a new process that the board and the superintendent were using.
Okay, and.
And using and developing together because I think that's also an important message that the board and the superintendent have developed this new process working together and, you know, at some point, you know, we need, I don't know if we want to include that at some point we might reevaluate, we get advocacy up and down, but.
Does that language need to be included or were we originally at the initial set point? Oh, you have something?
I'm good.
Okay.
Anybody else? Anybody not good?
I'm not good. Deborah has said she believes she's captured what.
I believe I don't think she's captured the notions.
Okay. 7.02 professional development.
The beans.
Oh, the beans, okay. I haven't eaten dinner yet, so. Informational item, and I'd like to begin with asking Melissa to perhaps brief us regarding the webinar, School Board Self-Evaluation, that she along with, I think, two or three other board members, including myself, participated in. So, Melissa, the floor's here.
I think at least four other board members, but, so, the MSBA offers an online tool for free as part of our membership in MSBA. It involves 72 total questions, 15 to 20 minutes is the estimated time it would take for all of us to fill it out, and all of us being seven school board members and superintendent. It's research-based from Washington School Board Association, it's based on the five standards of high performing school board. And it's just over Survey Monkey, so do it from wherever you're at on your phone or tablet or computer. And so, for free, then we would receive an overview report. Takes about six to eight weeks after we fill it out for those results to be compiled. And then we can discuss it and decide whether or not we would want to pay for an additional, more in-depth report that comes along with an in-service from MSBA. So, they would come down here and talk to us during the meeting and we could get the full report, but we don't have to decide ahead of time. So, if the initial report came back and we're like, makes sense, we know where to go with this, then we wouldn't have to spend any additional money. If we found that the results were at all confusing or indicated opportunities for improvement for the board, then we would have the option of bringing somebody in to work with us on that. The other good thing about it is that it provides benchmarking the first time we take it and longitudinal data over time so we can take it again next year and see how our results are tracking, if we're taking advantage of our opportunities for improvement or not. They would like us to take board action. It just says we're all in agreement that we want to do this and regardless of whether or not we're going to pay the money, which is what would require, I assume, the board action, they just, they said they'd like record of it. It helps them to make sure everybody's. It helps them to make sure everybody's on the same page. I don't think we absolutely have to do that, but they suggested that during a board meeting, we all resolve to do the evaluation. So when we get the link for the survey, we would have five to seven days for everybody to complete it. And at the end of that five to seven day period, close to the end of it, we are to check in with them to make sure that everybody has completed it, so that people can be poked to finish it in timely manner.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't mind. The other thing that they said is it's anonymized. I mean, you pick your name. You pick your name. Like, I hope everybody doesn't pick one of my favorite colors, which is orange, because we're purple.
That would be a giveaway, no?
Yeah. Or Don.
So, you know, MSBA won't know who... Which survey is attached to which board member, and none of us will know unless we give it away. So that's the point. So you want to say all of that scandalous things and bring it up, so it's here, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's any ability to write text.
We took it once and didn't get done with it, so...
The webinar was great. It sounds like a really good tool and it's free. Great idea.
And 20 minutes.
I think we should absolutely do it.
And if we wanted to pay for the full package, it's $9.75.
Yeah.
$10.75.
$975 and zero zeros.
That includes that person coming in.
It includes, yeah. It includes the in-service.
Is the insert two to three hours? So it's just a set price, not like...
Yeah.
So they can get through to us in two hours, less than if it takes three hours to like...
No.
So my recommendation also would be to move ahead of that because it seems like a good value.
Is there anybody... Oh, well, I mean, you can't get a lot in that. But I mean, if there's anybody here who is absolutely like, "I will not take this. I don't care what anybody says." I think we need... I mean, we can do it with missing one person, but it's much more valuable to have eight people complete the evaluation or the self-evaluation.
I think it sounds really good.
I agree.
Excellent.
And... Oh, and the superintendent also completes it.
Right. I think I've done... We did it a couple of years ago, but I would encourage you very strongly to spend the $975 to have them come and work through that, the results with you.
Probably went hard in the way.
Yeah, the full... It says, "In the full report breaks it down by the number of board members for each response." So if, you know, one of the questions is, "We don't get food at our board meetings," and everybody agrees that that's an issue, then, you know, would be seven or like...
Well, that'll make us become a high performing school board also. When's our next board meeting? It'll be monologue.
I was... Well, you know, I was trying to give an example, but it's stupid.
I was done on this one.
So the next question would be, Melissa, do you know what the process is?
Well, actually...
You contact MSBA.
Yeah, I can speak to that because I felt so strongly in the value of it that I reached out, spoke to Gell after the webinar. And I have the information, the link that I can make available. Just wanted to make sure that we were on board, okay? And it sounds like we are. And that's great. I'm excited. See the value of, and I think that will be a huge piece of advancing our professional development. Now, having said that, there's a few other components of PD Board Professional Development that I'd like to speak to briefly. And one is... Well, one... And Julie, you made me aware of this book. This is probably the second time I've attempted to kind of put this back into play. I haven't read through it completely, but while I have read this far, it seems to be a high-level approach to helping us realize and develop a better sense of who we are, what we can do. I envision, and this was initially presented at one of the MSBA, or was it NSBA?
NSBA.
Conferences, and it has greatly helped me to better understand, and even some of the discussions we had under agenda item 7.01, evaluation. It basically begins with the board knowing its role, its function, having its goals. Those goals then help set and provide goals, direction for the district, the superintendent. And absent us having goals or understanding as to, well, our community, how we see the community of educational needs. And this is a little different. But I, from professional development, would propose, be it this book or Endeavor had a number of... She broke out her binder books, okay, at a meeting the other day, and had a number of governance-related.
This is another one?
I just read that one.
I haven't read it yet.
No, I got a different one.
Simply suggesting if we do see value in our development, and one way to potentially achieve that is by engaging in a book study of some sort, which we could debrief or talk about at the end or in conjunction with a school board meeting to actually kind of make it relevant and actionable, not in terms of the formal agenda, but something that we're processing together and then maybe incorporating into how we do business. I guess I'm just simply putting that out there. Do you see a book study being something of possible value for us as a board? Secondly, and then the third thing I will offer then is also as a possible option, do some of you have heard of the Trust Edge?
The Trust Edge?
Trust Edge that MSBA offers, yet also it's also, I think, offered privately by other entities other than MSBA. Do you think that's something we could benefit from as well? It is broad discussion of board development and bringing on tools that will help us grow and move to that next level that we, I think, each desire to be and have the tools necessary to bring that about.
Well, I'm going to start with the lovely bite-sized book that you have on table, because I did go to that session and I do have that book. So I like the size.
Sure, you've already read it.
No, I haven't. I have not. This is one I am not reading ahead.
She's read it, not like it.
But I also like the person who wrote it, because he comes from both a superintendent and a school board perspective and did work for the entire state of Washington. So a lot... I just like where it comes from. It's a broad scope of experience. And even though that's the bite-sized book, he has a bigger, like, manual. So if we...
Like a 20-course meal?
Kind of, yeah. So there's more materials where that comes from, if we're looking for more. So I like that. And I guess the only question I'd pose is, how would we do the book study? So...
And the materials?
Well, you wouldn't have to. We have staff teachers doing book studies, and if you don't get together and reflect together about, you know, how many chapters you assign, it's not meaningful. So you could do a special meeting for it, or you... There's no reason why you couldn't end of a regular meeting, just say, "Let's talk about chapter one through two," or whatever that was assigned.
I think that's all there is.
Yeah, that's why I like it. It's bite-sized.
I will, and I shared this with, and now since somebody's here, I'm okay with saying this, I've shared this with Don and Deborah. We have some serious issues. Probably starting a couple of months ago, I'm starting to hear from Cabinet that it's us versus them. I mean, they're feeling it's us versus them as far as the Cabinet and the school board. And comments were made that they don't trust that we know what we're doing. Even though the questions may not be your intention, but it's received as we must not be qualified to do our job, that we're getting all these questions and they don't trust us. And a lot more comments came up that I shared with Deborah and Don. If the Cabinet, you know, Julie said something earlier tonight about working together as a team with the superintendent, the Cabinet as well. And if we're not working together as a team, we can't be as effective as we can be. I just share that with you because I was surprised when it started coming up. And so I did at our, not today's, but I think it was before last week's meeting, we happened to have Cabinet on a Monday because we had mediation all day Tuesday. And I just asked point-blank, I says, you know, "I'm hearing that there's this feeling, you know, a couple of cabinet members told me this, let's talk about it." And some of the things that came up, I shared with the two of them. And it really, to me, centered around, they believe that there's not trust that they can do whatever their specialty is in their department. So, and it's not, I don't believe the intention of the board, but it's their perception and their perception is their reality. And I don't know, I mean, I think we all sat together a couple of years ago, and when the guy that wrote the book, Trust Edge, was one of the keynotes. I haven't read the book, so I don't know how good...
Can you talk about Nancy? Is that...
Yes, I do know Winona, School District, their board is going through that training because she reached out to me and she was... They don't have a budget for professional development like you guys do. And she said, well, asked, "Well, how do you pay for training for the board?" And I said, "Well, we have a line item for that and to go to conferences." So they, they're going to do it. You know, we could wait...
Nancy Dancer.
Yeah, Nancy Dancer, who's their, now they're president of their board.
Nearly elected president.
Just elected and elected president at the same time. But, and she, just in the couple of conversations I've had with her, I don't think it's a trust issue between her and her, their Cabinet. It just, I don't know if you follow, they're just within their board, there's issues. So that's why they're going through that training. I mean, we could wait until, you know, they go through it and touch base with Nancy and see, is it something that's valuable? Is it good? I don't know. I don't know. Or I can reach out to other superintendents to see if any of their districts have gone through it. I mean, there may be other...
And just since Mike mentioned that they were going through it with somebody we knew, I thought, well, you know, getting, if they were going to do it soon or something, get somebody back. Plus because she's, you know, she worked here for a...
First generation.
We know she's been on both sides. She might have a really interesting perspective of, yeah, that was really good, or, eh, didn't really meet our needs and why. That's all, you know, I just thought that was...
Okay, so they're doing a training on, with the Trust Edge with MSBA?
Yes.
And is it the keynote speaker who does it, or does he have a team?
I doubt that. I bet it's probably somebody within their organization got to train the trainer or model or something. I wouldn't think, for what they're charging, it would be able to get him in.
He's pretty.
So my purpose of even mentioning it was not to necessarily... I actually see as a higher, well, don't want to rank these, but certainly the board evaluation, I think we've already agreed, yeah, for sure, let's do that. It seemed like we were trending toward maybe a book study as well. Don't want to lose sight of that. And then maybe a close second is potentially exploring and maybe waiting to hear back from Winona, how that, you know, goes with them. Though at the same time, being aware of the concern the superintendent has shared, I think from the position of trust, you know, believing, no allegations were being made, no accusations, just a sharing of perception. And, you know, I've shared with Mike and Deborah on several different occasions how, well, how perception can become a person's reality, whether it's perceived or actual, and how minimally by maybe being made aware, we can become more intentional. I know when Mike made me aware or made us aware, I had occasion to call Jackie about a student club at, well, a parent called me regarding his son who wanted to start a Young Republicans Club at Mayo, and how, what was the best way to do that? And so, oh, this happened to be on the 11th or when was it? The 7th? Whenever, the 5th? Whatever the referendum was, okay. So I called Wendy initially, no surprise she wasn't available, but I then reached out to Jackie, and she, you know, gladly, freely shared. And then because I had heard about, oh, this perception, I said, "Well, you know, this is the right way to have done that." And she said, "Oh, yeah." And she appreciated that because whether it's perceived or actual, I think the things we can do minimally, for me being aware of something, allows me the opportunity to not necessarily go looking for it, but to at least be aware of my actions or words and how they may be perceived one way or the other. But I think unless we wanted to mine further into the comment and/or discuss what we want to do with the Trust Edge, my goals were met, at least initially in terms of the professional development, hearing from you that the board evaluation is a good idea. Didn't actually answer Kathy's inquiry as to...
How to do the book study? I like, I like the idea of tacking it on to when we're all already here, whether it's a study session or a regular board meeting. How many chapters are there?
I haven't gotten that far in.
I think if you're at a stop sign, you can probably get it before the light turns green.
83 pages to include the references, consisting of two pages. And there are, Julie, I'm surprised you didn't beat me to the pasture in those. Oh, interesting enough, they're not numbered chapters. This is a high-level book. They don't do that.
It's all one big chapter.
So we're going to have to do it by pages?
Pages, yeah.
Well, I would suggest maybe from looking at this, a natural division would be on page 35, where it says preparing for launch. So then it's, I mean, the previous chapters are, you know, getting set for board business, who's in charge, you know, these titles. You know, and it's about, it's about how they through. And, you know, we could maybe try taking that. If that's too big of a bite, then maybe we might have to do it by chapters.
Can I propose this? That's not a bad idea. Can I propose if, is there anyone who needs, Gell, let's start?
For instance, how many books I need to do?
Okay, how many ones do we need to order? Let's get a book in everyone's hand. And then we can go to that next level of...
You've got one? You've got one?
You know what, Don? I'll get my own. I mean, I'll just, I'll Amazon it. You can get it on Google.
Well, that's what Julie told me.
You can get it on Google.
Well, Don, you have this book. You can do Amazon Prime and get it over tomorrow. Kirk Joe, for being...
Me, too.
You, too.
The only other thing I would offer up, and I don't know, but I was told that there were a few board members that sat through one of the Daggett's training and talked to somebody about executive coaching.
I remember Daggett's training. I don't remember executive coaching.
I don't know. That's what's brought to me. So then I reached out to Bill Daggett and said, "What kind of executive coaching do you have?"
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. We talked to somebody about whether there was something for board members.
It might have been a consultant or...
Yes. Yeah, so since it's happening with the leadership, is there something with the board members to dovetail whatever?
Oh, okay. They, then I misunderstood. Could I... What it was brought to me is by one of their people was that you wanted the executive coaching for boards. So when I talked to Bill, he says, "Well, they have a person who used to be pretty well-respected, and I don't know at what level, for the Illinois School Board Association, now works for them and provides executive coaching for board members." Not specifically on the rigor and relevance framework, but just board stuff.
Yeah. Well, and I, the Illinois School Board Association people were also at NSBA, and we went to both this session and Illinois, and it dovetails really well. Yeah, so it's also a small book, but I like the small book better. It's also a small book, but I like this small book better.
So.
Or, or, I mean, if we wanna make it easier, I mean, we can just start with the first chapter.
Well, we're gonna wait till everyone has the book in hand and, and then go from there because.
Then everybody can.
Right.
The only thing I would add is I personally would prefer a separate meeting versus at the end of a long board meeting to have the discussion. I think it'd be more productive.
Yeah, true, true. It was meant to incentivize us to not drag our meetings out so much.
I knew there was an ulterior motive there.
No, they couldn't.
I'm sorry, I'd like to recap if you don't mind. So we're going forward with the self-evaluation. Do you have a link that you can send us now that's already ready or not?
Yes, but I wanted to circle back around to what Melissa offered, not as it being required by MSA, but suggested that we formally do that at a board meeting.
Oh, take the evaluation?
Yeah.
Most board, we don't need.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Well, can we be on record that consensus was that we wanted to do it?
Put it in the man's.
Yeah.
Okay, so about the link then, what needs to happen with the link?
You know, in this consensus.
Let me circle back around and touch base with Gail tomorrow.
And you said how many, five to seven days?
Five to seven day window.
Okay.
With which we should answer it. But then somebody should be done to follow up with them in that five, day five to day seven.
So.
To make sure everybody's answered.
Melissa, can I ask this then? Do you want to, on behalf of the board, reach out to Gail to formalize?
I thought you and our.
I have, but just in listening to you recount what they're saying, I guess I didn't wanna have both of us maybe double messaging.
If you've already messaged, why don't you just follow up and say we've moved to that?
Okay.
Because then it might sound like we have two different people on the left hand and what the right hand's doing.
Excellent idea. I should've, I should've not have.
I don't wanna look like I'm undermining it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So Dawn is gonna reach out to Gail to get the link.
Right.
Then the link will come to us.
Right.
Then we will fill out the link.
And can I, can I ask if our expectation is, are we gonna try to get this done before Christmas? Cause I'd like it not to be hanging over our heads over the holiday.
Well, I'll have her recommendations included in what I send back out to you. Because once the link is active, then there's a certain timeframe. And then I think there's also, you had mentioned a six to eight week.
Delay.
Right.
Right.
So.
I mean, if it's a link, I would imagine that it could be.
Right, right. Twenty minutes to complete.
So I mean, unless somebody's saying, I'm out of the country with no phone service in the next seven days, please don't send it to me. Somebody will wait.
And I think, I mean, I don't think you have to do it all once every month.
Right, right, right.
You can come back to it.
Okay.
Can you do that?
So.
I don't know if there's self-coverage in Arizona.
Actually, I'm gonna be going to Provo, but I can get it done.
Go ahead.
All right, so self-evaluation, good to go.
Petrophite force.
Book.
Right.
Dawn, if you look at page seven, there's actually some sections and pages identified. They may not be chapters.
Right.
But they are like 24 page chunk, 10 page chunk. So we could break it up into little pieces.
So we could chunk it.
We could chunk it.
I don't mean to step into this too much, but would we like to have somebody kind of be in charge of the book study thing?
Sure.
College professor, university professor, maybe?
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't necessarily volunteering myself, but I think you were making this more complicated than it needs to be. A book study doesn't have to be that.
Somebody be in charge of signing, read page such and such and such and such by the next meeting.
Well, that test.
Anyone wanna take that on?
Jean will.
And not volunteer someone else.
Yeah, you can't volunteer someone else.
Unless somebody else wants, I've done this maybe 200 times.
Update yourself now.
Oh, everybody knows I'm old, so.
Okay.
So book study will kick off after, Wendy will let us know when Mike gets the book and make sure that Jean and I have the book. And then Jean will lead us forward with an assignment.
Expect it to be long and boring.
All right. Okay, and then we need to find a date.
Right.
To put that together.
Which is a, which is a good question because it's one of those, do we try to fit it in our first meeting before the end? Because don't we have just one meeting in December?
In December?
Oh.
Right now we have a prison taxation on December 3rd. We have a regular meeting on December 10th.
Okay.
I do have a tentative study session on the 17th, but I'm here and some people won't be here. December 3rd is too early for one chapter.
I won't be here. I'll be in Arizona.
December 2nd.
By January.
January meetings, 7th and 14th.
January meetings are the 7th and the 28th. Okay, this is Mike's on the week of the 29th.
You have a mind like a computer, honestly, Wendy. I bet it's impressive.
This is her jam. Come on, wow.
This is what I do.
You're good.
Okay, so, well, let's wait until, this would be my recommendation. Wait till everybody gets the books. Who knows, is it gonna take a week? Is it gonna take two days? And then kind of go from there. And then maybe Jean, if Jean's gonna be the point person, Jean can work with Wendy on meetings. Is that all right? And put that actually behind your plate, but.
With the notion of attaching it to a meeting? Is that how we're still looking or?
Even possibly go 4:30 to 5:30.
Maybe before, before.
I mean, if that works for people.
That makes that work.
And then just an hour and then another.
Yeah, I like that.
If there was a retreat, it doesn't have to be.
That's brilliant.
Right.
And it's, it's a study, so, yeah, I still have to advertise it.
Right.
So we could do it in this morning. We could do it in the.
And did I also hear the, oh, there's not, people aren't gonna be here on the 17th, so take the tentative retreat off our schedule?
I'm, I'm, we're in January now?
No, December 17th.
In December. Oh, do you want it that week before Christmas? No, I didn't think so.
Well, I just don't know if what's pressing. I don't, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the anything pressing.
There's nothing.
Give us, how about this, what days do they have?
19th.
I was gonna say tell the 20th, we're not meeting on the 20th.
27th.
No, we're not.
I was just saying, anything that could, you know, give us some time, we're not meeting next week. Think about it and we'll think about it. Everybody think about it.
And then our final item for tonight is the parking lot process. And Deborah's gonna. Not to be confused with the Kmart.
Deborah, please use a different color.
That's true. Has the city given approval of that yet?
What did you write on the very bottom?
Oh, I said, so, I put a star by self-evaluation by board and super plus facilitated walkthrough.
And everything's assigned to Julia.
I don't know, I really hate to use my piece of paper.
You could write on the back.
It could, but hopefully you can't.
No, don't, because, no, don't, because I'm.
It's a legal document now that.
Oh, is it, what? I will type it up. It's not legal.
Yeah, there's a whole going there.
But I will go into the minutes.
It just becomes a legal. There you go.
So if it's not a legal document, does that mean it's an illegal document?
Good question.
Parking lot.
Foot stripes.
Am I talking to her or are you ready for me?
No, yes, foot stripes.
So we've kind of been kicking this around a little bit, I think in our last few meetings. And we're just calling it the parking lot, even though we need a better term. But, and I think, I realized at some point that we were kind of talking about two different things. So sometimes I see the parking lot as our to-do list, right? So we've already got that going for this week, right? So to do Jean, Jan is book study.
Oh, rockets.
And Wendy is ordering blow up, right? I mean, these are really easy today. We have some good examples. So I think we, you know, and I really appreciate, you know, maybe Melissa doesn't, but I appreciated that, you know, Dawn asked you to take a lead on something. I thought that was really great, right? Because we all should be responsible for something and it was really clear. And I knew Melissa had it and I was like, good. So I don't know how often we get those, but we get those sometimes. Similar yet different, I think, is what we kind of, we've employed two ways. Is at the study session, at the data retreat, we kind of made our parking lot list. And you guys can help me remember. I mean, we don't remember the specific things, but the types of things, right? So that was our study session. I was gonna go to St. Thomas and take the really fancy class on the parking.
Caribbean island?
No, not that, St. Thomas.
Nice Caribbean.
So the study session, we kind of talked about different things. We're like, okay, we're gonna come back to that. And then we kind of came back to it at the end. Some pros and cons here. Dawn has also sort of implemented this policy the last couple of board meetings of checking in at the end. I don't know what to call it, I'm just gonna put it, check in. So I think where we're still struggling, where I feel like we're still struggling is this is a really, you know, this is a logical thing. Somebody is going to do something. We just need to remember to actually do the something, right? And then who's going to remind us to do the something? Study session, I thought was okay. I mean, we generated some ideas and then we talked about them. And some of them were like, we got our consensus, which, you know, are nodding dogs or turtles. Okay, yep, we see that. And some were like, eh, didn't really like that. The board meeting, though, so I'm gonna use, Kathy and I talked about this, so I'm gonna use the examples I gave Kathy and start calling out specific people, not in a bad way. So at the last board meeting, Kathy, it was the equity. And Kathy said at the end of the presentation.
It would be great if the equity specialist could come back and report on how some of the programs that they're implementing are working, like the after-school essay class.
So, you know.
Oh, you're not gonna write the rest of it? Just, it would be great if?
It would be great if, it's, it would be great if, right? And Mike, you've probably heard a board member say, it would be great if we could, blah, 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 right? So I think we're, we're getting into, and I don't hate to use the word trouble. You know, this is one board member making a suggestion to the superintendent about something that they want done. And maybe people go, eh, sounds okay. But six months goes by, a year goes by and Kathy's like, well, I, I said, I wanted that equity update. They said they'd be happy to come back. They never came back. Wendy never put it on the calendar. Mike never told the equity department. Board members, nobody remembered, you know, okay. So I, and I don't know that we can solve this tonight, right? But I'm just trying to like, put it all out there, what I feel like we're struggling with. So here's one example. My second example was, and I'm, I'm attributing to Melissa, although I think I chinned in on this as well. And this was sort of a group one. So we talked about having a building presentation, which we did. And we also came up with the idea, and I don't know if it was me or you or, I don't know, about having the kids do the pledge who represented that building, right?
Was it me?
If it was me, then.
You're gonna take this one, Deborah?
Okay.
Somebody else had a good idea.
I think, I think that we've been doing the pledge before Melissa was on the board, so.
No, but we just talked about this.
We just talked about it last week.
But Nancy, the kids of the building who was presenting, is what she's saying.
Yeah, right.
Brilliant, I knew whoever had it.
So, yeah, that's a great idea. Dawn might have said, yeah, good idea, right? Who's, but who's doing this, right? Whose responsibility is this? And does it make sense administratively, right? Because I don't know who is saying, school, X, Y, Z, come here and do a presentation. Probably is not the same people who is getting the kids here to do the pledge, right? Nice idea, maybe not so great administratively. And did we just ask you all to do something that you're like, do you really want us to do that? Oh, my gosh, that would be, you know, Wendy's going, oh, my God, okay, if I have to schedule, get all these buildings on the schedule and then I gotta figure out how to get the pledge kids, but I gotta get the right pledge kids, you know, right? So again, we kind of, somebody kind of put something out there, apparently me. And in front there, without anybody saying, yeah, but, so, anything else?
Well, so in addition to individuals, either of these examples, do they automatically rise to the level of obligating the superintendent to implement or actively pursue? Because again, as you've heard him mention in the past, well, he works for us, you know. So it's not that he has the right to refuse or say no, because again, we're the guys who perform his evaluation. So my thought has been, well, it would be useful if, and you, I think, have sensed, be it during the study sessions or during the board meetings, trying to gain, if you will, well, are there other board members present who support the idea? And, and it's, I think, well, it's a new approach for me. I'm not sure that it's a shared approach by others. And, and so without there being, if you will, an agreement as to how we're going to do business, then these things may be great ideas, but they could potentially go nowhere because while the person who makes the recommendation thought, presentation feels, oh, yeah, everyone said, yeah, yeah, yeah. But nothing formally was done beyond just saying, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you said something that was really important and I wanna just say it again. And it was that the board's saying to Mike, you work for the board. Mike does not work for me. He works for, and I mentioned this earlier, he works for the board. So, and we've had these discussions with other boards. You know, so if somebody goes charging into the superintendent's office and says, I want this and this and this, Mike is, well, do you have three others who want the same thing? So really what, I think what you're asking for is how do we structure this? How do we formalize it? How do we structure it? What's the framework that we can say, okay, you know, this is a parking lot, there's a lot of potholes in it. Does this go in a pothole and we pave over it? Or do we actually, you know, hey, pretty nice car, we'll look at it?
Yeah, I like that, yes.
Dawn, I like the way you've been ending meetings by asking people if there is something that came up at the meeting, an agenda item, that needs to be revisited or that we discussed but didn't get finalized. I think that's important to bring that kind of to closure. This other piece, I'm wondering if it would work effectively if somebody got a great idea like kids and building at the same time to email you two. And then when you have a meeting with Mike for the three of you to decide, either this leads to the level that we wanna bring it back to the board, put it on the agenda, present it to the board, or just, you know what, bad plan, it's not gonna happen. I mean, we elected you as leaders. And if you two and Mike decide yes or no, for me, that's all I need.
And if, if I can piggyback on that, if, if for some reason the rest of the board disagreed with that, then we could revisit it and say, are there four people? Which, you know, hopefully it won't be necessary, but it's an avenue.
And I, I'm wondering if there's a level of formalization that we don't wanna back ourselves into a corner on. Because some of, so for example, my suggestion about the equity update is it's a regular item on our board agenda. It, it doesn't come every month, but it comes periodically. And I think that personally, I don't know that, we've had a lot of discussion about what the value of that is to the board, right? Is it like, whose agenda item is it? Is it Mike's agenda item to tell the public? Is it Mike's agenda item to inform us? Is it our agenda item to help us make decisions? Like what's the, what's the construct of it? And maybe on some of those things, if we had conversations at a study session as opposed to at a board meeting, on, I think that was one of the conversations I was hoping to have about the annual calendar. On, you know, those kinds of items, if we could agree ahead of time over the course of the year, then I don't know that we would have those, oh, that would be a good. then I don't know that we would have those, oh, that would be a good idea. Because we already know what's, we already know what we've talked about. We've already, we've already talked about the information that we need. We've talked about, you know, what, well, this is what I've done in the past, and this is what the board has used to make their decisions in the past. Is this good for you guys? Yes. And I think that, I think that came out in our study session with the data dashboard. And I think that was a good example of what you're saying about the superintendent's evaluation. It was the first time we did it. And I think we learned a lot about what was in it. But if we had had some conversation about what was gonna be in it, before we actually saw it, I know I wouldn't have had as many questions. Because it wasn't, it wasn't about questioning the quality of the data, or criticizing the outcomes. It was really, you've presented this to us as information we're gonna use to help make our decisions. So if we don't have a two-way conversation about the kind of information we need to make our decisions, and the kind of information you're bringing, I feel like we're two cars driving in different directions. So I don't know that I wanna vote on every single piece of information we ask the superintendent for, but I'd like to have a collegial conversation where we get to consensus.
Well, I think Julie proposed an option to be considered. Basically, the chair, vice chair would be the parking lot attendants. I mean, you know, basically, you know, we're the ones that are, you know, tasked with taking whatever you've said, and bringing to the team meeting, having that discussion. If it's something that's doable, what would that look like? How should it occur? And then providing feedback back to the board regarding that. The data referencing that you're doing is, I view it separate from what we're currently considering. So it's a good example for discussion. And maybe that was an example, you didn't wanna have us backed into a corner to where if issues like that were discussed at a study session, and...
Although the questions like that can come up at our board meeting, right? Because somebody could look at it at the board table and say, oh, wouldn't it be nice if? And then you've got seven people saying, wouldn't it be nice if? In response to a presentation or something that happens at our board meeting. So it's not just at study sessions, it's whenever somebody has a notion.
In which case, I mean, if, if that is the case, where the majority of, of the board, and I think any future chair will have the skill to say, it sounds like that's a recommendation, that someone will formalize that into a motion. Then it's how we move forward, versus simply, well, seven people agree, but nothing ever occurred. So some of what has been referenced is, there's a number of things we talk about, and may even think are actionable, because we, for whatever reason, thought we were being moved to that point or place, but there wasn't a consensus on the part of the board. There are many things, that's what I try to move toward, is, well, okay, that's, okay, that's one person who thinks this fills that. Are there other board members who want that? Because again, and, and I may be wrong, in terms of my understanding, in terms of board governance management, if you will, not management as relates to the superintendent, but just management as relates to the board and the conduct of the meeting. A motion is required to carry the action forward. You know, versus simply, I think, I feel, I want. And if any board member feels that strongly about what they may think, feel, or want, I'd like to make a motion to. Why can't we just do that? Instead of kind of leaving it in this nebulous area of, I think it would be neat if.
Right. I guess I'd have to ask Wendy about the... So the structure of that would happen at the end of the meeting, then, in the context of the check-in? Because in an individual agenda item, we already have a resolution, right? That we're voting on in that moment. So let's say in the discussion, on something we're actually voting on, somebody says, "I think it would be a great idea if." But it really has nothing to do with what we're actually voting on in that resolution. So we would have to come back to that at the end of the meeting in your check-in, and someone would have to make a motion there. Is that right? Is that, I mean, just trying to think about how to operationalize it.
And is the motion really necessary, or is just to show hands consensus good enough? Because if we do a motion, then don't you have to put a resolution into the minutes?
Well, somebody would have to make one, right?
We would have to.
Yeah.
Don't want to do, be it resolved wording and everything?
Yeah, they want to do it on the fly.
That could be a real pain, right?
Yeah.
The only issue with that is, it seems to me to make, to make an informed decision, an informed vote, you'd have to discuss it. And you wouldn't have had time to think about it ahead of time. And a meaningful discussion could go on for another half hour.
What if everybody has one, that's seven?
Well, and that's...
That's three and a half hours.
And that's only going around once.
Right.
That must be Miss Melissa, right?
Yeah, man, like, yeah.
I, you know, and once again, I mean, who's, who's, I think it should be the responsibility of the person who said, "I have, I have this idea." You know, "Well, I might have this idea right now that seems really great, and by the time we get to the meeting, I've probably forgotten it." No, or, "I thought it, turned out, eh, I'm not so sure about that." You know, so, I, I would hate to assign a single individual to keep track of everything. But if each person is responsible for their own big idea, in bringing it forward, and then, you know, if it's a really huge thing.
Well, I think Don is, I think Don is asking us to keep track of that during the meeting. And then when you ask for our check-in at the end of the meeting, if we don't speak up, then, and it was our idea, then forever hold our peace, right? Because we, it was, I think it's what we do with those, and when.
Yeah. And, I don't, if, if, if it's not an issue, I mean, if you guys are good with how things are going, that's fine, you know. I'm, my stint as board chair will be over in a month, okay?
Or will it?
So, I'm not, I'm not...
There's nothing to consider.
Fool me once, shame on you. But, so, I assumed a responsibility, basically, to try to make sure that I was doing right and fair as board chair. And, and...
I like the check-in.
So I've assumed frustra, I have experienced high-level frustration, thinking and feeling that I'm trying to, like, well, that maybe I'm pulling in a direction different than where the board may be, or desires to be. So, in part, you know, I think this is a very healthy discussion for us. And, and maybe, as we incorporate, do the board self-evaluation, book study, we may, these things may just shake out on their own, you know.
Well, and I think too, like, some of these things, you know, I, if you're willing, I'd like you to just respond how you feel when you hear those things. But, like I said, I don't think we have to necessarily come to any sort of decision, or consensus, or whatever. I just kind of thought we should bring this to an awareness, because we've kind of been talking around it. And, and kind of be on the same page, knowing that I, I believe we have all, at one time, said, "Well, it'd be great if, blah, 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 blah," right? And not, and I probably locked out the door and forgot completely what I, what I even said. And maybe Mike, or maybe cabinet members go, "Oh my God," you know. And so I, I just kind of wanted, felt like we should raise it to a conversational level, to just make sure that we're not, you know, if, if, if you have said something, and feel like it wasn't heard, or feel like you were waiting a response, or whatever, Mike, you know what I say? We gotta keep the lines of communication open, and Mike will take your phone calls, or maybe he will set up a meeting, because I think that could go a long way to, I mean, not saying that we're having issues, but just getting that stuff out of the open, instead of being like, oh, I always, you know, I say, I suggest this, and no one ever does it.
Well, and that's part of the expectation of, of action, right? I mean, if we, if we've never said before, oh, if a board member says something, don't expect, if one board member says something, don't expect Mike to do it, right? Then we wouldn't have known that that's not the way it goes. But I think we're sort of halfway between there, and figuring out, like, what is the right way to carry forward ideas that might be, that might be good in the end, but...
I think some of it could depend on what the idea is, too. Something might, that might, you know, Mike might be able to implement, like, immediately, like, okay, in every study session, we're gonna have pizza, and everybody's gonna chip in five bucks. I mean, we could do something like that, if we wanted to. The other, the other thing is, the good idea might be a future agenda item. So, you know, to Jean's point, like, well, we haven't had discussion on it, okay, let's put this on a future agenda, either next time or whenever. And the person whose idea it was, then could maybe lead that discussion.
And can that be part of a study session?
Or part of a study session, what, however you would, you know.
Well, like, the, these items, right? Instead of bringing it to the next regular meeting, couldn't we just make it a process that if we have things that aren't resolved at the check-in, at the end of the meeting, you know, you know, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be next week, right? Study session might not be for three weeks, or we might not have it for another month, but that's where it goes.
But, does it get complicated if it's something we need to vote on?
I think if we have to vote on it, then it has, it's gonna have to go to a regular meeting to be... But I don't know that we'll know that in the moment of when someone says, "I have a notion," right? It might take, it might be a better suggestion if we don't rush to vote on it.
Right.
Or we may find out, it's not even worth talking about.
Well, and, we don't have to vote on everything. I mean, I don't think we should vote, unless the kids come with the pledge on the same day as their school. I mean, that's not...
But I don't think we should vote on it. Right, but I don't think we should vote on it, unless, until we give someone a chance to say whether it's even, like, a realistic option, right?
But I think that's the kind of decision that the superintendent should be making. And, and not have to necessarily...
Well, I can tell you, just that one alone, Wendy struggles to get any kids from any building to come to do the pledge, so...
So, in theory, it's a bright idea, but practically speaking, it maybe isn't that so much.
But, but that's that two-way conversation that I, I love us to have space for. Because if I know, you know, I have this notion, and I know we're gonna have a chance to, you're gonna have, you're gonna have some time to actually figure out whether it works or not. And we're gonna have time to say, oh, yeah, let's not go forward with that. Then we don't have to rush to make a decision.
The other thing I think that Mike has been particularly good at is telling us that he doesn't understand what we want him to do. And I'm just surprised you don't say that more often. Because I'm not sure we're always as informed, real clear, on, on what we're saying. And it's like, we have all this conversation, all that, and what am I supposed to do? Just tell me what I'm supposed to do, and I'll do it. So, I, I mean, I think that's, that's a big piece of it.
So, I, I think my, I mean, I feel like we're getting close to, but my feeling like, you know, sort of trying to put a pin in it, is wanting to, I can only speak to myself, but as a board member, I want, I want us all to be accountable, knowing that, saying something like, "It would be great if," that Mike should not expect, I think Julie said it, so I'm saying the same thing. That you should really not go, oh, somehow, somebody said it, or your cabinet. And I know it's hard, because I know that's your reaction, but, you know, again, let's try not to... Remember, we're gonna hold each other accountable, right? And if somebody storms in your office and says, "Well, I told you to have this equity thing," that you would come to whoever your executive committee and say, you know, didn't we talk about, "I'm not gonna take a directive from one board member, and we will help account for it."
I do like something that Kathy said earlier. And, you know, we gave you the year of the calendar, but those are just things that come the same month every year, based on when we get the information, or when the state requires to get it approved by. But you could, for some of these things, you could, in a study session, come to consensus on, yeah, we would like an equity report two times a year. We'd like it this month and this month. Or we'd like whatever it is. But I would follow it up with saying, after doing a great book study led by Jean.
It'll be mediocre.
We're all going to be governance experts. So those topics will probably be more right in, and it would be better for us. Starting in August, we know, okay, whoop, I see in November, we gotta do first equity update. Then later on. But can you come to consensus on those? But then also challenge each other to say, now, is that, is saying we want the school, the same school that's doing the update and the pledge people, is that really a governance issue? I mean, that, I know that's just more...
Right, right, but it is, it is a, it is a, it's a somebody's notion, right?
So, I really like that idea of, if you can come to consensus on, we would like this twice a month, or twice a year, okay, let's figure out what's, we can say, well, probably August is not a good time, because, I mean, we can kind of provide input on, well, it'd be better for this month and this month. For some of those things, you're gonna have some things that just pop up, that you're not gonna be able to plan ahead. But the lower you can plan ahead, the better for us.
Especially having the strategic plan, right? And knowing, you know, for this year, next year, where the, where the focus is. It's tied into your goals, because we use the strategic plan to guide where your goals were. I'm anticipating, whenever it comes up in our board evaluation, is, is gonna be tied back to that. So, and your presentations at the board table are tied to that. So I think there's a, there's a great opportunity to make that cycle for the year.
So whose responsibility is it, if someone has a notion? Is it the person whose notion it is to say, do I have three other people? Or is it the chair's responsibility to say, "I heard an idea, but I don't know if it's consensus?" Or is it Mike's job to say, "I heard you guys say you want this, but I don't know if it's one person or multiple people?"
Well, within the context of a board meeting, that would be, in what term are you using? The check-in. That would occur at the check-in.
So, who's responsible?
Whoever have the notion to begin with, that would be their opportunity to say, you know, speak to it. And then, if there's consensus, then that would be established at that point.
So can we have consensus, either to say yay or nay? Or can we have consensus that it needs more conversation?
Yeah.
Depends on what it is.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I wanna, I don't wanna agree to things that, you know, Mike's sitting over there going...
Sure.
Just because four of you like it, doesn't mean it's doable.
Yeah, I, I, what I would probably suggest is, when they come up, you actually put it in the parking lot. And then, at the next meeting, it's an actual agenda item. Because if not, if you're gonna put, put something on the parking lot, you gotta be prepared that night to say why you need it.
Right.
But this way, it would give you time, you know it's on the parking lot, the next meeting is gonna be on the agenda as, is this something we want to pursue or not? And then you would have to convince enough of your board members that this is something that we should do. Not that it would actually happen that night, but yes, it's a thing that needs to happen.
At a study session, though, or at a regular meeting? Because that's gonna add a whole bunch of agenda items.
If, if you're doing something at a regular meeting, you know, we could just add a parking lot agenda on a number of the business.
Yeah, new business or some other...
Whatever, it's something more official sounding. Or check-in.
Yeah.
Check-in or parking lot.
Well, but the check-in is at the end, right, to collect it. But then, you're saying, put it in...
Yeah, I'm saying at the next board meeting, we had, these three items were...
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot. Melissa, you brought this one up. You wanna explain why we think we should do that, and then you can discuss it.
And it gives you some time to pull stuff together.
And if the consensus was, or vote, or consensus was, yeah, we wanna pursue that, then we know it's gotta be on a, a future gen item.
And, well, but the other thing I think we have to be careful of, and not get locked into, it has to be on the next agenda. Maybe it's something that you need time to explore, and right now, you're doing this huge thing, and you don't have the time to explore it right now, or it's gonna take a lot of time to explore.
You could work that out, right?
Can we agree that it should be placed on a future agenda? Whether it's the following...
I don't completely agree with that, because if it's something that isn't a super big deal, and we can all just, you know, with head nods, that sounds good. We don't need to lengthen our agenda item at the next board meeting, if we don't have to, right? Plus, plus, what if it's more time-consuming than that? So I, I think that if it's a big thing, and somebody says, "We, I need a little bit more time to consider that." If it's a little thing, maybe we don't need to overly formalize it.
You're suggesting that just because it is initially relegated to the parking lot, does not mean it has to be, it may not be worth the, the agenda. It may be something that can be quickly agreed to at the end.
Yes, because, I mean, who knows how long this'll make our meeting?
I think as a board, we could prob, probably handle that.
I mean, because it depends on what it is.
Sure, sure.
I mean, because of what it is, I mean, it's all, you know?
And it may be nothing.
If it's little, that's just part of it right away, and if it's bigger, then...
Right. So as I understand it, we would have a check-in at the end of every meeting, where everybody would come up with their individual checks, and then, we would see if there was any of those check-ins that needed to be acted on at that same meeting, or would be put into a parking lot for the next meeting, and then we would talk about the parking lot things from the previous meeting. Yes?
I like that.
Can we put that under number eight as other business? Because right now, it's blank, and I know I'll forget about it, because it's new.
That's what I said.
Yeah. Wendy already has a section for it.
I know Wendy has a section for it, but can we put something in that section?
Yeah.
Okay.
By name, other than other business?
Yeah, like eight, four, L, one.
Okay.
You mean, you add an agenda item to section eight, which is other business?
Yes.
Yes, I can do that.
Pretty colleague.
Okay. So, the point of, if I could quickly, us and them, Wendy knows how to do her business, okay, how to handle her job, we don't have to tell her how to do her job.
I just, I wasn't trying to tell her how to do her job.
Oh!
I was just trying to clarify that something was gonna show up, because I look at other business, and it, it doesn't mean anything, because we haven't done anything with it for a while.
So perception, you know, and, and I'm not gonna belabor the point, but I think that's what happens when maybe cabinet members here, and they're thinking, wow, you know, don't you know that I know how to do that? But, you weren't trying to, and, so I appreciate the...
Did you take it the wrong way, or how I did it in turn? Why are you putting me on the spot?
Yeah, I took it the wrong way, there you go, I took it the wrong way.
Can I go back and ask about the items that are in the, in a parking lot now, from the study session?
There's only one lot that I'm aware of, and that's the data.
Yeah. What's, what's proper data that should, board needs to govern? I'm still, I think one thing that came up was, what are the other big nine schools are doing, so I'm working with the superintendents to collect that information from them.
That was the only, are we talking about the parking lot from the study session?
Right.
Because we ran, every other one of them got...
Yeah, there were several items that really tied into, to data.
Okay.
And then I think there was even some potential discussion about training in that area, what, and maybe that is in the book, I haven't seen the book, so, but, those are, that's the things that I remember.
Okay. Well, there was a note that I had here about something that Don mentioned, he wanted the policy committee to look at, about looking at when, the, the whole timing of when board members get documents before meetings? I don't know if we resolved that.
Documents earlier than five days.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that was you that wanted documents...
Yeah, well, yeah, we, that I didn't know that we, where we were with that.
To that end, then...
Because you didn't want the due list.
Yeah, well, yeah. So to that end, you know, the concern is being expressed, and it said, well, we have control over that, we can change the policy, okay? It was this, this great idea, well, an idea, okay, but who was assigned the responsibility?
I looked at the policy committee, Deborah.
There was not a formal request of the policy committee to do anything with it, so, and you're on the policy committee.
Well, yeah, but I think that, but, but that was the conversation was, have the policy committee look at it, so, I know, only because I didn't have a parking lot list come out of that study session.
And we don't have a date for a policy committee meeting anyway, so...
And, and what we'll discover, and I'm sure Dr. Marvin will help us discover this, is, you know, there are, well, I'll hold that and allow her to tell us at the appropriate time, in terms of different committees and all that stuff. Oh, spilled the beans again. That's an expression. That, that's an Alaskan colloquialism. You wouldn't get unless you're from Alaska.
I heard that before, yeah.
So I think...
Do you have any more beans to spill?
No. I'm good.
Are you going to be in, well?
But, to be fair, were there any, anything burning on...
I have a further thought about the parking lot idea. So, sometimes, a board member will email in a question or a request for information. Would that then also, because it's not happening in an official meeting, it's just one board member, but, if that request for information goes in, and the administration says, I'm not sure we wanna proceed with this until we hear from other people, because it's gonna be a very lengthy thing, so would that also be something that we'd wanna bring up in that follow-up section of the agenda?
Well, I think there, if I recall, there was some, back when we were having protocol discussion, there was a discussion that we probably should have established. I, I see that as separate than this.
Okay. And that's...
This, to me, is things that you want as future agenda items, not, I got questions answered, and I want answers.
That's good.
I think, which I don't think, I think I'm sure that we have established a protocol on that.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if it would be the appropriate place.
Well, if you're been wondering, is that something that, whether even now, at a study session, you're saying, hey, I'd like to have that place in the parking lot, so we can discuss it later at a future board meeting or whatever, because I think it is something that probably is worth it.
But I think the protocol discussion is still on the table, so we don't need to look around to that. I'm just saying, would they, would, would this new solution also be a potential solution to another issue? We can, are you ready to get that in?
But I'm not sure if you're, if you're, maybe I'm not understanding you, but, but I think, I think the parking lot ideas could come in the form of an email. I don't, I don't feel like we need to limit the parking lot, or whatever.
Oh, okay.
Just to, you know?
And I don't know if that's what you were asking necessarily, but...
A little of everything.
Um, but like, if I go home from a meeting and go, oh, you know what, blah, blah, I mean, again, it's, you know, protocol systems, I mean, the exec committee sends stuff, I think that's okay. I don't think we should feel like, oh, I didn't bring it up, well, I'll never talk about it again, because missed my, missed my chance, you know?
So then, who would we then email?
I would just, the exact thing, because it's just the fun.
To say, I thought of something, and can we talk about this in our follow-up session?
I think that makes most sense.
So, when we do that, when we say we want something in the parking lot, then would the exec committee have the authority to retell it and say, you know, we really think that's a stupid idea? Or will it be in the parking lot, and will it come up pretty good? That's a good question.
It's a good question.
Well, I think if it's a stupid idea, it won't. If we say it in a meeting, right, if somebody brought it up in a meeting...
I'm talking about an email.
No, but, but, I'm contrast, if we said something at a meeting in check-in, I think, as I understood the process, we were either gonna say, is this something we need to talk about now, or is it going to go into the parking lot under other business in the parking lot for the next meeting? Right? That's what I heard. So if it comes in as an email, we don't have the moment to check in, right? Because it's not at a meeting, and we don't have that immediate moment to vote on it, because it's a single person's email, does it automatically go into the parking lot? Because there's no consensus about it going into the parking lot, it's still, somebody brought it up.
So it's still on the road about to enter the parking lot?
About to enter the parking lot.
Or I think if you're at Forest Street, that'd be the green zone.
We're calling it the hopper.
The hopper.
Right? Isn't that where stuff goes in the hopper?
Well, unless you're SpaceX, then that's their next spaceship.
Really?
Yeah.
So all our ideas are going in the hopper?
Right.
And then we're turning on the switch?
And that's going to the moon.
We don't have video.
I like parking lots, they all have spaces.
I already know to do some crazy...
That was sort of interpretive dance right there.
See, it is recorded.
We're on the camera.
It's only, it's only retreats that are...
It's retreats that are recorded.
Just...
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all right. So...
So, do we have an answer to that, then? Are you good with that answer?
What's the answer?
I don't know.
The answer is the hopper.
The answer is it's late, it's time to...
So it's a hopper. And Wendy is keeping the hopper.
No, we email it to the exec committee, but then Wendy's not happy.
Yes, I guess not.
Okay, so, exec plus Wendy.
And then I'll make sure that it's okay with this guy, people, I...
But that was my question.
And the thing is, is that we could email you back and say, I'm not sure what, give me more details about what you want to say.
Right, but my question is, when we put something in the parking lot, are we gonna have a consensus about it going into the parking lot, correct?
No.
In, in a meeting, or does it just automatically go?
That's what I just asked.
So if I say, I want this in the parking lot, and I see six people doing face palms, then, does it still go in the parking lot?
What's a face palm?
What's a face palm?
Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't heard that term before.
Sure, he's never heard that.
Yeah.
No, I haven't, but I've, I've done it, and that's people do it, but I guess I didn't know if that's what it was called.
Thanks for getting the rest of the minute.
Yeah, there you go.
I, I think we've reached, perhaps, the point of overthinking.
No.
That was about 12 minutes ago, Deborah.
I'm not, I'm not taking it, I'm, what I'm saying is, if, if one person can say then, at the board meeting, I have this idea, and I want it to go in the parking lot, you don't have to have three other people saying, no, this is parking lot, at the table, and if I don't have three other, I thought it was like, there has to be a majority of people who say they want it to go into the parking lot for further discussion.
Yes, I, I...
Okay, so if Melissa, since you were the one who brought it up, if Melissa has a question, and it goes to the exec committee, then we have two people making the decision about whether or not it will move forward.
I would suggest, if it's, if something thrown in the parking lot or the hopper, it doesn't occur at a meeting, it's emailed in, it would be on section eight, another board meeting, saying, somebody recommended this, is this something that we wanna pursue as a board?
I mean, I, I was just concerned that we're giving veto power to two people to make a decision, that in another context, the whole board would be...
But you actually, I mean, we actually do have that power, and then you bring it